The time is 7:04. We are back in open session. We have previously opened up our public session in 6 o'clock where I read the announcement about the meeting being held remotely as an alternate means of public access. So we are going to continue with the next item on agenda, which is to consider a potential vote to sign the memorandum of agreement with the Firefighters Association, IAFF, Local 2398 Union. And I would like to initially turn the meeting over to Russell Khan to begin this discussion.
Joe, I think he's still joining us.
He's still joining us.
Yeah, I was just, he was having a little trouble finding the right room. I just, I texted him everything.
Oh, good. We've got our fire chief here. Who's Colby Wilcox going to join us as well?
Said he was going to call in. I believe he is working on doing that.
Would you like to do the minutes while we give Russell one more minute to come in? There he is.
There's, that was his cue. Mr. Khan. Got to turn on, there we go. Welcome to our open session. And I've just begun with the, our consideration of the memorandum of agreement with the Firefighters Association, IAFF, Local 2398 Union. If you could begin the discussion, please, Russ.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, fellow. Thank you to our members of the Select Board and others present. As some of you know, I and Courtney Orwick of the Personnel Board have led the negotiations with the Hingham Fire Department Union. We have concluded memorandum of agreement with the Union. Two agreements. The first agreement is from July 1, 2020, to June 30 of 2021. And the second is from July 1, 2021, to June 30, 2024. So a one-year agreement and a three-year agreement altogether. And we do recommend, those are the Personnel Board through Courtney and I do recommend those memorandum of agreement to the Select Board. And we have Hingham Fire Department Management, I think, on board supporting this. And hopefully, a member of the Union will join us to explain for the Union's perspective. Just by way of background, we had four sessions going back to mid-August and we concluded in mid-October. We had a union team consisting of Chris Malanson, the Union President, Colby Wilcox, Union Vice President, Dave Nickerson, Owen McCanna, and Tom Jacinto. They had very experienced Union Counsel Paul Hines, who's done a few of these for the Hingham Firefighters. On the Hingham team, we had Chief Murphy, Deputy Chief Richance, Todd Administrator, Tom Mayo, my fellow board member Courtney Orwick and myself. So five on our team, six on theirs. You know, by way of background, I would say probably more due diligence went into this CBA discussion than any I've done in 10 years for the town. In part, that was because, as some of you may know, there is a national shortage of firefighters, is becoming extremely difficult to recruit and retain firefighters on the national level, on the state level. And the Hingham Fire Department has not been immune to this. And so we had that backdrop. We also had the backdrop that through time, the Hingham Fire Department, the Union members have fallen behind. Where we try to place them typically, we have 19 sister towns that are similar to Hingham. And we try to stay above the midpoint generally, and we have fallen below the midpoint. And then third, is nobody probably needs me to remind them, we had an international pandemic over the last 19 months that is still ongoing. And this has hit first responders and I think Fire Department people pretty hard. So those issues created a lot of need for due diligence and discussions behind the team from all stakeholders on the Hingham side. And that was the Select Board, Todd Administration, Fire Management, and the Personnel Board. And I'd say everybody worked really well to come together with a process to approach this negotiation, try to work something out. And we have worked out something that I think is very reasonable and fair to the town and the Union. I don't think anybody won the contract. I think it was a nice compromise. I think people listened to each other on both sides very well. We tried to listen to the Union and their thoughts and concerns, and they listened to us. We came out, I think, with a nice memorandum of understanding. On the first one, the one year, I've been calling this the COVID contract because, as some of you know, or most of you know, all Unions in Hingham accepted a one-year deal, 20 to 21, at the usual 2% general wage increase. All Hingham Union employees got the same 2%. The Firefighters Union was the only Union to vote that down and was without a contract for 2021 when we started these discussions. But as part of these discussions, they have now agreed to accept what everybody else accepted, which is that for the 2021 contract, there's a 2% general wage increase and everything else is the same as it was before. The 21 to 24 contract, initially, it was very clear that the Union was entitled to a so-called equity adjustment. We do that with all Unions when we find that they have fallen below the midpoint on contracts with the 19 comparable towns. And the MOA, for the second MOA, has a, an equity adjustment in it to bring the Union up above that midpoint. What was different about this contract from the past, at least in the 10 years I've done these, is we typically have done a two, two and two, a 2% general wage increase. For this, you know, with the, with the, I think, wisdom of the Select Board, the urging of the Hingham Fire Department Management, Chief Murphy, the urging of Tom Mayo collectively was thought that if ever there was a time to do better than 2%, this was the time. To quote Doris Kearns Goodwin, "This is no ordinary time." And so we negotiated a 3% wage adjustment for each of the three years. And I think that was well received by the Hingham Fire Department to do that. There were several other important changes. You know, I personally, and I'm sure others on this call are a big believer in education. Everybody knows the police union has very good education benefits through what is called Quinnville benefits. We did enhance the educational benefits, pay for degrees in fire science and medical training by about 1,000 to 1,500 per degree for associates, bachelors, and masters. We also added some tweaks to the longevity incentives that were another way to encourage people to stick around. So these two things enhanced that. We agreed to some cancer screening, which is important now nationally in fire departments. It's a policy that does need to be developed, but it will be through a subcommittee. Some of the things we requested as a town was mandatory fire training at the Fire Academy for lieutenants and captains within two years of their promotion. That's been agreed to. We've requested proof of an annual physical every year that we think is a good way to make sure people are seeing and getting good medical care. That's been agreed to. We've added some enhancements to increase the Fire Department's ability to recruit people from other departments. So by way of example, if we, if we recruit a firefighter from another department, typically he would start over, he might have had 20 years in that department, and he would start out as a brand-new firefighter and get two weeks vacation. Once he spends three years with the Hingham Fire Department, he'll get credit for that other service. And that's thought to be a good enhancement tool. Overall, I would say at the end of the session, after four sessions, there was a fair amount of goodwill on both sides that we were able to get this done in a positive, effective, and prompt, efficient way. And so certainly Courtney and I, Ms. Orwick and I, are very pleased to present this to the Board for approval. We think it'll go a long way to increasing Chief Murphy's ability to retain and recruit good firefighting talents, and it will make the Hingham Fire Department feel like the valuable resource they are for the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. And your closing statement was exactly on point, that, that this is a department that the town, the town depends on, we count on, and, and it's good to know that we're moving forward in the right direction. I do see that we have Colby Wilcox on the line for the Union and hoping that we can get some comments.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Colby Wilcox. I'm the Union Vice President for the Local 2398 and a captain on the Fire Department for, I've been on the program for 16 years. I just want to take a minute and I want to thank Tom Mayo, Russ Khan, and Courtney. It was great to deal with them this round of negotiations. And I think that when we brought this back to the membership of the department, we put a presentation on forum and I think we have, you know, everyone was very happy about what we came back with. And without them being instrumental in realizing that we did need a pay increase and an equity adjustment and landing where we did, it wouldn't be possible. So I just wanted to say thank you and thanks to the town of Hingham, you know, for putting it forward to the Board of Selectmen and hopefully it gets a vote of yes tonight.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else? I see Steve Murphy here, our chief. Would you like to give us any comments on the proposed agreement?
I would echo what both Russ and Captain Wilcox just said. And I, you know, think that this is a great agreement. I think that it provides some incentives to hopefully encourage bringing people to the, to our, the Hingham Fire Department. And it also recognizes the value and worth that we put into the current members of the department. So, thank you.
I just want to add, because I did note, and a number of my fellow members on the Select Board noted, the focus on cancer screenings and generally the health. And that's been a theme that the town has been looking at as we've been moving forward with plans for the Public Safety Facility. The, the health and welfare of our firefighters as well as police officers has been front and center. And so I think this contract advances one of our, one of our important goals here. We do have, where did she go? Where's Courtney? You know, you are there. Did you, you didn't want to add anything? You are part of the negotiating team.
No, it was, it was a great experience and I don't, I think Russ, Russell said it really well. He summed it up well. Thank you.
Great. Bill Ramsey. Any comments?
No questions, just a couple of comments. I want to thank Russell, Courtney, Chief Murphy, Tom for their work on behalf of the town. But I also want to thank Colby and Chris and their team for working with us and hammering out what I believe is, is a strong contract from the town perspective and also hopefully for the Union. So the work all around, happy to get this ratified and good news. Thank you.
Great. Liz Klein.
No questions, certainly echo everything everyone has, has said. I was happy to see the equity adjustment as well as some of the other incentives, as well as the cancer screening. I think that's, that's one of the things Chief Murphy told me when I first met with him, that that was a real concern for the department. So glad that that's in there. So thank you to everyone for all the hard work on this.
Yes. I just have one, I just want to confirm something, Russ. Are we talking about a contract that goes through June 30th of 2024?
Yes.
Yes. I think that's, that's, that's a great accomplishment for the town. So, so thank you. Tom, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I just wanted to, to just put a bow on this. The, the Union has ratified, we heard from Captain Wilcox tonight, the Union has ratified this, this MOU, or the MOA that, that identifies all of the points that were negotiated. And the, the negotiating team has also signed the contract. So it's ready for your vote.
Okay. Are there any members of the public who have comments or questions about the MOA with the Firefighters Association? Seeing none, I am prepared to accept a motion. I believe that there are two motions.
Make a motion to sign the memorandum of agreement to Firefighters Association, IAFF, Local 2398, Union effective July 1, 2020, to July 30 of 2021.
Second.
Moved in second, we do a roll call vote. Liz Klein.
Hi.
Bill Ramsey.
Hi.
And Joe Fisher. Aye. It is approved. I'll accept another motion on the, the next agreement.
I will make a motion to sign the memorandum of agreement with the Firefighters Association, IAFF, Local 2398, Union, effective July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024.
Second.
In second, and we do a roll call vote. Bill.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
And Joe. Aye. It is approved. Both memorandums of agreement are approved. Thank you all for your work, your diligence, and your devotion to the town. Very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is to consider approval of the minutes dated October 5, 2021. I'm prepared to move forward. Liz?
I'm prepared to move forward.
And Bill?
Ready.
Then I'll, I'll accept the motion.
I make a motion to approve the minutes dated October 5, 2021.
Second.
We do a roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And Joe? Aye. It is approved. Thank you. Next on our agenda is to consider the proposed Hingham re-presincting plan. And I believe, do we have Carol Falvey on the line? There you are, but you're, there we go. And I, and Lonnie is here as well.
And Lonnie is also.
So perhaps if you, you can both unmute yourselves and you can tag-team this if you want. But please, Carol, if you can just lead us off.
Sure. So the last time we were before you, we had presented information on a revised plan and wanted to get some consensus from the Board to, to move forward. We had to go back to the Local Election District's Review Commission to ask them for a description, a legal description of this, of the seven new precincts. And Lonnie spent so much time, they sent us some draft language, and she really spent the time inserting the streams and the rivers and the bends in the road and the maps to make it, to make it a legal description. And we submitted that back to the state last week and we got the final approval on Friday that it was acceptable to them. So we are now here before you. They have requested a formal vote from the Board that will go to them, it will be printed on our letterhead and attested by myself as a town clerk. And so that is the business before you this evening.
So you did present this before. The map that, that we currently have, I don't know if we want to throw this up on the screen. Michelle, is that something you can arrange?
I think Lonnie is going to do that.
Maybe Lonnie is, okay.
Just to clarify, do you want the current map, the, the active map for the town right now, or what's being proposed tonight?
What's being proposed? Because at our last session, we went over the, the prior, the prior one, and.
This should be the version 3 map.
Right. And so what I'm going to ask you, Lonnie, is if there, if there are any differences in the proposed map that we have this evening versus the ones that we, the one that we saw previously?
No, no changes in the map.
And the statute requires that the precincts be compact and, and that they, you know, they're not bifurcated, they're all continuous. And I can see from the map, that's exactly what you've provided. And where will the voting centers be for each of the precincts?
So precincts 1, 2, 3, and 4 will vote at the high school. Precincts 5, 6, and 7 will vote at the middle school. And Linden Ponds will retain its subprecinct, which will now be part of precinct 7. But they will still, there will be no practical change for them. They will be voting still on their campus.
Got it. Liz Klein, do you have any questions on this?
The only question, I just wanted to confirm that we don't have to put Linden Ponds as a substation in the description, because I don't think I saw that as, like, I think you were calling it 7A.
Right. I think that's just going to be a separate vote of the, of the Select Board to designate that as a subprecinct.
Got it, okay. All right, no questions then. Thank you for all the additional detail. I know we went from unnamed streets to very, very granular details, so thank you.
Yes. Thanks. Bill?
No questions, just appreciate all the time and effort that was put into this. So thank you, Carol, Lonnie.
Oh, Lonnie did all the work this time around.
Tom or Michelle or Art, did you have anything you wanted to add on this?
Well, like, as they were saying, I think, you know, Carol and Lonnie really, and working with the state, really did Yemen's work. You know, sometimes you think of GIS as pretty maps, and that is in fact a pretty map. But you can see the data that goes behind it. This is, is our insanely detailed documents describing every nook and cranny of each of these precincts. So, great job, Lonnie. Carol, thank you for your dutiful efforts, as usual.
Yeah, and this, this is something that happens once a decade, based on the census results. So hopefully, next year and a year after, we're not going to be dealing with this. We'll have other issues. Do, are there any members of the public who have comments or questions about this? I see none, so I am prepared to accept the motion.
I will make a motion to accept, as presented by the Town Clerk for the Town of Hingham, Massachusetts, the 2020 re-presincting plan, including the official precinct map and precinct legal boundary descriptions for the Town of Hingham, Massachusetts.
Second.
We do a roll call vote. Liz Klein.
Aye.
Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
Joe Fisher. Aye. It is approved. This really is, is a great accomplishment, something that needs to be done to assure that each of our citizens are, have the right appropriately to be voting in the right precinct. And it, the work that was done, it's all behind the scenes and you make it look so easy, but it's not. So thank you both, Carol and Lonnie. It was really, really very, very helpful.
Welcome. My pleasure.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is to consider the agreement with Woodard and Curran to provide professional engineering and consulting services in support of the Town of Hingham's Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System MS4 General Permit Compliance Program. And I believe we have, is Randy on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
I hear you. I don't see you. Am I going to get to see you?
No, my tablet has decided to upgrade and.
Okay.
I got no camera.
And I see, is Kathy Riley on? There she is. So before we take this up, I want to take advantage of Randy being on the line. Just to really take the opportunity to thank him and the entire DPW team for their extraordinary efforts responding to last week's storm. As many of you know, the storm last week was a bomb cyclone, which was more powerful and destructive than anything we've seen in recent memory. And possibly the last time we experienced one that was so bad was Hurricane Carol back in 1954. So this was truly an epic storm. Hingham fared better than many other South Shore communities, really thanks to DPW and to HMLP. They were well-prepared and in constant communication throughout the storm. Last Wednesday and Thursday, there were at least five DPW crews working to clear down trees and debris. Hingham Light coordinated with the DPW every step of the way, advising on which wires were live, so tree crews could safely perform their work. And it's important to note that the town brought in specialized tree equipment and cranes that allowed our crews to deal with dangerous trees and clear roads in a much faster timeframe than usual. Jobs that would normally take half a day to complete took an hour, greatly accelerating our response. And so really, Randy, you need to know that we, as a town, appreciate your proactive approach in this regard. And I understand that two crews are still working to clear debris from town trees, starting in South Hingham, and methodically working their way north. And we appreciate everyone's patience as the cleanup continues over the next few days. There was significant storm damage that the town experienced. Randy, I know that your staff was working nights, weekends, to respond to calls about downed trees, block drainage, and other issues. And since you're here tonight, I really want to extend the gratitude, not just of the Select Board, but of the town, to your entire team for their efforts. I'm going to talk a little bit more about the storm and HMLP later on, but I want to take advantage of your presence here, just, just to really thank you and your team. So, so thank you.
Thank you for the thank you. It was a horrendous storm. I've worked two hurricanes in town, and this is more devastating than any of the others. There's damage on, in every part of town. And we would still be cleaning up the trees if we didn't bring in that specialized equipment. The town does have a contract, a tree contract, and they provided these specialized equipment that cut the trees and a chipper that just went through the town really quickly, within three days. And we had the specialized equipment, two pieces for two days. They probably did 150 trees. And I do have crane crews in from yesterday to today and to tomorrow. We do have several other trees to take care of, and we are hiring, you said days, I'm probably saying weeks, in order to clean up the rest of the town. Because we keep finding things that we have to deal with. But I really do appreciate, and I will let my guys know that your appreciation for our department. Thank you.
So thank you. But I do want to turn to the agreement with Woodard and Curran. So can you summarize, Randy, you can split this task with Kathy in terms of the best way to present what's being proposed for the professional engineering consulting services?
So the agreement is for, for Woodard and Curran, who helps the town, helps us manage our MS4 program, Phase 2 stormwater program. And that involves several requirements from the EPA yearly. The town has gotten a little behind in, in meeting these requirements. So I have gone to Woodard and Curran and asked them to help us out. And a lot of this has to do with our field mapping and investigations of the catchments, outfall inspections, the catchment delineators for each outfall. And, and generally, just general compliance. We need to, to get this done, and they're going to bring in their resources to help us get it done. I don't have specific employees for these things. So we really do need these services, and it is mandated through the EPA.
Yes, to my understanding, it's both the EPA and Mass DEP that has the.
Mass DEP also.
Yeah, that have the requirements. So I understand that the contract amount is for 136,000. So I understand that the contract amount is for $136,800. And are you satisfied that this is an appropriate amount to be expended in this regard?
Yes, absolutely.
And the term of the agreement, I believe, requires the work to be completed by June 30th of 2022. And do you believe that the work in fact can be done by that deadline?
Yes. The contract is designed basically as they gave us 136,000 to get it done. If we, if the budget doesn't allow or if something happens such as the event we just had and we can't get it done, then the contract, they only, they only, we only pay for what we get.
Yeah. Got it. So one second here. Kathy, did you want to add anything?
No, I do the bureaucratic paperwork in the background for these kinds of contracts. So.
Okay.
And work with John on that too. So should be all set.
And you're satisfied with Woodard and Curran in terms of the providing these services?
Yes. I think, you know, Randy, several of his MS4 programs are done by Woodard and Curran and Chapter 30B does not require competitive procurement for engineers. So it's logical that they would do this part of the work also.
Yep. Great.
And they also worked for us last year also. So
Yes.
They do good, do good work.
Yes. I recall that and I recall you were satisfied with them at that time. Liz Klein? Questions?
Just a quick question. I noticed part of the contract was time and materials. So those are estimates. I guess to follow on to what you were saying, Randy, in terms of they'll, they'll track their time and we'll pay for, for what they get done.
Absolutely.
Okay. Great. And will this, will Woodard and Curran do the complete project or will it require Lonnie's time as well? To, to do some of the GIS work?
Woodard and Curran should do all the GIS work. They, they have been in contact with Lonnie. If there's any issues, then they will work together, from my understanding.
Great. Thank you.
Bill?
My only question was whether or not we've used them in the past and Randy just answered it. So I have nothing additional. Thank you.
Tom, did you have anything that you wanted to add on this?
Well, just to thank Randy and his group for all the work they did.
Yes. Are there any members of the public with comments or questions?
No, could I add one thing?
Please, Michelle.
This is one project that we are planning to submit to Plymouth County to use additional ARPA funds to get reimbursed for this. Stormwater is under the water sewer and broadband infrastructure piece. And we did check with Tom O'Brien over there. So once the contract's signed and the work begins, we'll submit for reimbursement through that program.
Great. Great. Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'm prepared to accept the motion.
Make a motion to authorize a town administrator to sign the agreement with Woodard and Curran Incorporated to provide professional engineering and consulting services in support of the town of Hingham's municipal separate storm sewer system, MS4 general permit compliance program in an amount not to exceed $136,800.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher? Aye. It's approved. Thank you. And Randy, again, thank you. We really, I just can't say enough for, for everything you've done for the town. And, and I know it's not just you, it's, it's, it's your crew, but thank you.
You're welcome. Can I say one more thing?
No, no, yes, you can.
I do want to mention that we do have these crews going through neighborhoods and areas of the town, picking up town trees. We will not pick up anyone who brings out trees that they're, you know, in their backyards and whatnot, because we just don't have the time. When we get through a neighborhood, we, we get it done thoroughly and that will be it. So I just didn't want to mention that.
Yes. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is to consider a potential amendment to the ground lease for Lincoln School Apartments and approval of construction contract with Verica Construction, Inc., regarding the Lincoln School Apartments window replacement project. I believe we have Art Robert and Amy Farrell. Is Amy, there you are, and Amy Farrell's here as well. So to set the stage, I don't know if Art, you want to take it or Tom, do you want to do a brief introduction?
I can go. I've asked that Robert to, to lead this conversation and this issue. I know he's been working closely with Amy and the team. So I would, I would take it over to Art.
Great. Art, thank you.
Fair enough. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to present. I'm here to provide an update in the path forward for the windows project for the Lincoln School Apartments. As the agenda before you points out, we, we had the, the hope to come forward to have a deeper discussion about a potential amendment to allow the project to go forward. I have to say at this point, we're not quite there. What I am prepared to do this evening is give you a, a snapshot alongside Amy and her team of where we stand and what we hope to, to accomplish in the very near future. With that in mind, I'll bring up my presentation and just use that as a, as a guide for what we hope to accomplish. There, there are ultimately two motions for the select board to consider to make that project move forward, and I'll touch on those. We'll provide a little background on the Lincoln School Apartments and the project. Speak to the need for capital improvements there. Talk a bit to the project schedule, at least as we understand it today, and the cost breakdown. And also look a little bit at finances, what it would take to make the project work and the readiness of the Lincoln School Apartments Board of Managers to, to, to proceed financially with the project. Our intent is for, at a, at a future select board meeting, targeting this Thursday, the fourth, is to bring forward more details on a lease amendment and a repayment strategy that will demonstrate the, the legal framework to make this project work. But also ensure that you have the confidence that the project can be supported. And of course, before we're done tonight, we'll, we're happy to entertain any questions you have. But before we go any further, I just want to point out that there have been a lot of people involved in a lot of conversations and a lot of insights shared by email over the past month or so. And I just want to be sure that those folks are acknowledged, some, many of whom are here. First and foremost, Amy Farrell, who's the Chair of the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust, Mark Coughlin of Strekolowski Architects, who's developed a lot of the detail behind the, the project and the procurement, as well as Jamie Bolio with Corcoran Management, who's the site manager and has certainly been helpful as we've been exploring the range of issues in front of us. I'd also like to briefly recognize the town team that's been involved. Emily Wentworth and Mike Silvira have been deeply involved at the nuts and bolts level. And certainly Kathy Riley, as our procurement lead, was instrumental in pulling the procurement together. And certainly we've depended extensively on counsel, outside counsel. John Coughlin and Susan Murphy have been helpful to helping the entire team understand the range of issues at play. Motions for consideration. When the select board is ready, assuming we've addressed all your questions and have brought forward to you a credible and supportable plan, we would ask you to consider two motions for consideration. One, to approve and execute an amendment to the ground lease between the Town of Hingham and Lincoln Apartments LLC in a form that we, that will be attached, that you'll be able to see. And two, a vote to approve and execute the contract with Verica Construction, Inc. for the Lincoln School Apartments Window and Door Replacement Project in the form attached here, two, a copy of the contract, which we've already shared with you in accordance with Section 3.2 of the ground lease between the Town of Hingham and Lincoln School Apartments. What these, the first motion is a requirement by the town meeting warrant article passed in 2016 that I'll touch on in a little bit more detail. The second motion is a town authority created under the lease. So these are both necessary for the lease amendment as well as to approve the project which together will allow the project to be executed and go forward under the lease's governance structure. Just a little bit of background, the Lincoln School Apartment building is, is is an expanded version of Lincoln Street School, which dates to 1912. It was, the building itself was rehabbed in 1981. And town meeting approved purchasing the building from Glastonbury Abbey in 2008 and authorized a $7 million bond issuance, which the town is continuing to pay and is expected to complete payments in 2028. The building has 60 affordable units available, available to senior and or disabled individuals and is managed by Lincoln School Apartments LLC for the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust. The Windows project itself is, is, is not cheap. It requires, it requires a substantial investment. And town meeting in its, its foresight in 2016 passed a warrant article that authorized an appropriation of up to $1 million for improvements by the Affordable Housing Trust for capital improvements at the Lincoln School Apartments building. And that same town meeting warrant article authorizes the select board to amend the lease to, to include repayment terms for any funds borrowed from that $1 million appropriation. Those $1 million were deposited into restricted reserve, excuse me, restricted fund balance account, if you will. And I've been sitting patiently waiting for the opportunity to support improvements at the site. Now, there's a lot that can be said about the need. This slide speaks to and takes advantage of information recently shared by Mark Coughlin, for whom obviously we're very grateful. As the new person stepping into this project, I might not be the best equipped. Certainly we have some basics here. Amy or, or John, would you like to speak a little bit more to the detail, in detail to the need at the site based on your experience as stewards?
So I'll, I'll give it a stab. And thank you, Art. Yours for 60 days at Hingham have been nothing short of engaging. So this is a large capital project. And to Art's point, it is, it's an excess of $1 million. But it's also been part of a series of capital needs assessments that have been completed since this town has owned the property. The property was closed and purchased in 2009. We had a capital needs assessment in 2008, refreshed in 2016. And the windows repair and replacement, excuse me, has always been included. What is most significant is cost escalations. Those line items for the replacement of the windows in 2016 and in 2009 were $350,000. And what you see in front of you is what deferring capital, what the result is. The windows themselves are original to the development of the property into a rental housing from a school. The windows have exceeded their useful life, which is a term many of you may be familiar with. And the replacement will do several things. It will allow for better insulation, better soundproofing, and then enhance things such as heating and cooling. Those systems are also original to the the development in the mid 90s, mid 80s, excuse me. And so those replacements and are also part of a, a larger capital needs program. And to be clear, the 2016 capital needs assessment is now due to be refreshed and we expect to have an updated one completed for us in 22 January. Mark Coughlin has been diligent and has been working on these for us since 2019, if not sooner. 2019 is when I joined the board. COVID definitely threw a monkey wrench into what our plans were. And, you know, I think I'll stop here. I may speak later about the property performance in a minute. But Mark, is there anything you'd like to add about the actual project that we're asking the select board to consider and ultimately approve? Mark, you there?
I'm muted. There we go. There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The only thing I would add is, is the timeframe on this. The cost of material is forever increasing over the last year or so. And I've been informed from Verica as recently as three weeks ago that the window manufacturers are raising their prices once again. And this would be in mid-November. And so that would be the third time this year. And I think it's only going to get worse with with the material shortage we have at this point. So the contract does extend, you know, we have 60 days to get the contract done. I think that brings us to December 6, somewhere around there. And then that, that would be the only thing, concern I really have at this point is to just the creeping escalating costs of materials.
Do you, you mentioned that you were familiar with Verica, who is the low bidder. Is there anything you wanted to share with the, the audience about?
Sure. Verica Construction, and our firm goes back about 20 years. We've done about, between a dozen and 20 projects with them. They are one of the favorite sons of DHCD for all of their public construction and housing work. Every project that I've been involved in. In fact, we just finished a, a door and replacement project with the Braintree Housing Authority with Verica and it was an exceptional job. They do great work. All the housing authorities love working with them and as well as DHCD. So I have nothing negative to say about them. Their paperwork is outstanding and they manage a project pretty well too.
So I think that we feel fortunate that this is the, the firm that's the low bidder and we would like to be able to move forward.
Terrific. Art, do you want to keep going?
I'm unmuted. Thank you. Certainly, Mark and Amy, thank you for that, for that perspective on, on the building and its needs. Clearly, we're all looking for a path forward. And I think we recognize that there's a, a cost urgency and a timeline urgency. And I think it's captured here, just looking at some, some of the, the project metrics here. First, in terms of milestones. Clearly, the LSA board made a, made a selection. They selected Verica at the end of September. And clearly, there's been great interest in getting, moving this project forward as, as, as quickly as, as practical. We have been engaged in conversations about the lease terms right up to, right up to just before this meeting on the 2nd of November. And we're hoping we can close on those shortly. We've got a contract execution deadline of the 11th. That's the, that's the date beyond which we understand the the, the cost, the cost commitment secured under the, the existing bid will be lost. So we're, we're clearly, we clearly have a, a clock ticking here, but also the discipline of the calendar here to get us from where we are, to get us to where we need. And we believe that working from that point forward, there's an opportunity to get the work done during the 2022 construction season and create a better quality of life for folks at the LSA before winter sets in in 2022. Clearly, there are some factors that may, may become an issue going forward, not least of which are some of the supply chain challenges that we hear about. But we don't know where that stands. But our first and priority is to get, get to the contracting, which means getting through the motions and the, and the lease amendments that support it. Cost breakdown, just reflecting on the work that needs to be done. Here are some of the major categories. Clearly, the labor materials make up the bulk of it. There's a waterproofing component and three alternative, alternate actions that if all are implemented, reach a total project cost of about $1.2 million rounded. There's a contingency pegged at 15% of 189,000. Hopefully, we won't need to tap that. And if we are fortunate to not have to tap that, that will keep the overall project cost down and free capital for some of the other projects that the LSA will certainly need, you know, based on a future capital needs assessment. A little bit on the money side. We worked very closely with Amy and Mark and others to develop a current picture of resources that are available in the LSA budget and where they need to be deployed to make the project go forward. First and foremost, there's, there's accrued cash flow, net cash flow rent that has, that is for the town and is on hold for transfer and will be transferred to the town as part of this lease. And there's a, there's a requirement for a little bit over $122,000 to be transferred internally into the replacement reserve account to support the project. You know, with these steps taken, you know, we certainly see the uses break down as follows, or excuse me, sources break down as follows for the project. That 2016 Town Meeting appropriation, accessing a million dollars of it, taking advantage of existing funds already in the LSA replacement reserve account, a little bit over $285,000, and also putting to work that additional 122,000 that will be deposited into the same account. That will get us to a dollar value that virtually matches the requirement under the contract when fully funded. Last point, last point I'd like to make, at least in terms of status, is that the, the boards that govern the building and what happens there, the Lincoln School Apartments Board of Managers and the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust have taken the votes that are, that are necessary for the, for the project to move forward, at least from their level. The Lincoln School Apartment Board of Managers, just looking a little bit more detail, they have voted to accept the Verica bid as the, as the project to move forward. And they, they voted that on the 28th of September. They've also authorized the Chair to execute a lease amendment to the ground lease between the town of Hingham and the Lincoln, Lincoln School Apartments LLC. So to make it so, to access the $1 million and work out the, the terms of that, of accessing those funds in repayment with the town. And that vote took place on the 18th of October. And last but not least, on the 20th of October, the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust, the parent entity to the Lincoln School Apartments LLC, voted to authorize the Chair to request the use of up to 1 million from that available appropriation under Article 15 of Town Meeting 2016 for capital improvements for the replacement of windows and entry doors at the Lincoln School Apartments. So the authorization has taken place, the authorizations needed to move forward have taken place at the board level. And we're at the point of working out the details. Amy, you and I haven't talked about this, but is there anything you'd like to add in terms of the, the perspective of either the boards in terms of getting this project done?
You know, I think it's clear that we feel these, this is a worthwhile project. I think one thing I don't want folks to forget that this is just one initiative that needs to take place. There is a robust list of improvements that need to be undertaken at the Lincoln School Apartments based on the age of the property. And we should all be thinking about what's the most efficient and there is an elegant way to achieve that. The property itself benefits from a subsidy from the federal government known as Section 8. And with the, those rents are based on area market rents and they're strong. With the recent, last several years amortization of the bond debt, there is now available resources at the property level, before we start talking about some ground lease payments, that actually would allow us to consider this, as they say in the industry, cash flowing positive. And, and that cash flow ideally is available to support some of these capital needs. And part of why some of the, we're looking, presenting this now formally, 13 years into ownership, is because there wasn't cash flow at the property level early in the ownership by the town. The HUD rents were not as high and the debt service was higher. There was a shorter amortization schedule than originally underwritten and that impacted what was available at the property level. And that's changed over 13 years. Certain repairs had to happen before capital needs, which are, tends to be a more planned and scheduled events. Certain repairs had to take place prior to capital needs assessment. And so we would like to be in a spot going forward where we can actually plan out how the funds are used to, you know, extend the useful life of the different systems, but also to Joe's earlier point, make this, continue to keep this a lovely place to live. And it is, it's a lovely place to live. That's all I have.
Thank you. Well, this concludes the, the level of detail we're ready to share with the Select Board this evening. We certainly would welcome any questions. And we certainly look forward to coming back to you very soon with, with the lease and, the lease amendment language and the repayment schedule, information that you need to feel comfortable with the motions that I, that I repost here on this slide.
Art, so thank you. And Amy, thank you for your leadership and the trust, Lincoln School Apartments. It's an important resource for the town. It's important in affordable housing. And it's something that we need to, to look at and make sure that we, we get these windows replaced. And Art, thank you for taking the bull by the horns for, for the town. I know you've, you are, you, you've just started with us and you're already making a difference. So, so thank you. I just want to ask a couple brief questions before I turn it over to my colleagues. With respect to the windows, is there a warranty on the windows? Is that something you've looked at? Are you satisfied with what we're, what we're getting in terms of the warranty coverage?
Warranty on the existing windows or the warranty on the new windows?
Oh, what we're about to get. Okay. I'm assuming that we don't have any warranty left on the existing ones.
You are correct on that. You may have, if they did replace, well, that's probably expired as well. If they did replace the caulking and the upgrades that were done in, I don't know, what was it, 2011? There might be something there. But the quick answer is no, you don't have any of the existing ones. But for the new ones, yes, you do. There are warranties on the caulking, the ceiling products. There are warranties on the windows, the glazing. And somewhere I have a list of all of them, but, well.
You don't need to give us a list. You just need to tell us whether or not you're satisfied with the level of warranty.
Yes, we have, there are the industry standards on each. So the windows, I believe the window is a 15-year warranty. But, you know, as were the previous ones, aluminum windows and you should get another 25 easy years out of it. Caulking, there's a warranty of about 10 years. The curtain wall system, which is the, the main entrance, the big windows there, and those are the ones that are leaking now. And we have a 25-year warranty on those. So we specified three, three of the more prominent manufacturers in the industry. You know, Conair on the window systems and Graham Architectural Products for the windows. So they'll give you the best materials warranty.
Just following up on, on the windows, you know, the town is doing its, its best to address its carbon footprint. Are you satisfied that we're, we're going in an energy efficient manner with this, this particular window project?
Yes, our approach was to, we could have, we, we could have gone the full distance and got the best products on the market, but we, we wanted to keep this in budget. So what we, we used as a guide is the latest is the International Building Code, the Energy Code, which is even more stringent than our current state code, which has adopted the 2015 version. And we're using the 2018 as the benchmark for our specification. So we have the U factors for the windows, which determine the thermal properties. We have the solar gain coefficients and also the, the light reflective light
Right.
variables that we're, we're looking to get as well. So it is a very efficient window.
I noticed the contract provides for 365 days for the work to be finished. Assuming that we do sign the contract before the end of this week, when would you expect the work actually to be, to be done?
Well, the only thing that would really, well, if, if you were to sign the contract this week, the first thing that they would have to do is get in there and measure each window and create shop drawings and middles for approval. Once that's, that would probably take between three and four weeks to, to get. They'll take that information and order the window materials. And that's where the delays may start. I was told during the whole process, working with the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust over the last years, we were looking at, you know, 12 to 16 weeks for the windows. And that's going up to bid, that's what we're looking for. But realistically, the windows probably won't arrive till maybe April or May. They could arrive in partial packages so they can be phased in. But the contractor understands that as well. Our contract has the installation starting in April. We were assuming that would get into winter condition, so we wouldn't allow them to install the windows during the winter. So at the beginning of the spring, and then that will probably take us into before the winter of next year.
Okay. And this last question I have, I think it's probably for Amy. I, I noticed that the contract price in the document we have before us is 1.216 million, which is lower than the 1.4 million that we've been discussing. Is the difference there, is that the contingency?
The contingency and the architect's contract for the total project cost. And the contingency is a function of the actual bid.
And so the architect's contract is a separate document?
Yes.
Is that a document that this board needs to be reviewing? Or have we already done that?
It's been signed. And I believe, well, Kathy Riley, I know, was part of the conversations to have that.
Yeah. We did a contract with Strekloski for the preparation and oversight of the procurement process, so the bid documents, which they had been working on anyway, with the specific drawings and specifications for the actual project. So we hired them for that piece as well as construction management so that they'll oversee kind of the, from the beginning to the end of the construction to make sure it's going according to the plan. And Tom was able to sign that because it is, it was under 50,000.
So it's under 50,000, but then we, we got up from 1.2 to 1.4 because of that contract plus the contingency. Is that, is that?
The contingency is the vast majority. That's 182,000.
That makes, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Great. Liz Klein. You have the floor.
All right. Just to thank you, everybody. I know that a lot of work has gone into this and it is a really important project. So thank you for everybody's diligence. Just a kind of a tactical question about the contract. I, I don't think I noticed anything about disposing of the old windows. Is that included?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And thank you for, for going through the timeline. Do we know what the impact to the residents will be? Assuming they will stay in, in their homes, but.
Yeah, so basically each unit, sorry. It's anticipated that each unit will have the windows removed and replaced in a day. So by the end of the day, when the resident leaves, they'll come back and there'll be the window replacement. The only thing we won't allow them to do, if the weather, it should drop below 32, they won't be able to provide the caulking on the outside. But they will, they will be able to provide the expandable foam sealant in between the window frames to stop any air gaps from getting it.
Okay. Great, thank you.
So Liz, if I can just follow up. I believe the contract not only deals with disposal, but also has a requirement for recycling associated with disposal. So I, I believe that's been addressed and I appreciate their, their effort in, in addressing that, that issue as well.
That is, thank you for bringing that up.
Bill?
Great, thank you. How many, what's the total number of windows we're replacing?
There are roughly, there are many different types and sizes, but the total windows are about 167 windows. And then if you're familiar with the, the building on the newer addition, there's also these large sliding doors. There are eight foot by eight foot sliding doors that have these planters in front. Those sliding doors are going to be removed and they're going to be replaced with a, a, a window that's a combination of fixed windows and some casement windows. And the planters are going to be removed from the, from the building as well. There were 38 of those type of windows. So all in all, there's just under 200 windows.
Okay. And what, what type of window are we using? Is it Marvin or is it?
No, no, these are, they're Graham Architectural Products. These are commercial window, aluminum, extruded aluminum with thermal breaks, one inch insulated glass with argon gas in between. So Marvin, you, you can get a Marvin commercial window and it probably would end up being aluminum window. But because of the size of these windows and to meet the wind loading requirements, they're more of a structural window.
Great. Well, I'm just thrilled with moving forward with this project. You know, the money's been appropriated since 2016. And as Amy pointed out, the need is, is there. It needs been there for a while. So this is great to see us moving forward. Art, thank you for the detailed presentation. Amy, thank you for your work too. And Mark, thank you. So looking forward to getting this going.
Great. Tom, did you have anything or Michelle, anything else that you wanted to add on this?
Liz, thank you.
Thank you.
Any members of the public have comments or questions? I see none. So the next step is we are going to be getting hopefully a final draft of the lease amendment and the financials, part of the Town Meeting requirement is to make sure that we've got the financials in place so that we understand how the Lincoln School Apartments will be repaying the $1 million that was part of this appropriation. So that is the final step. Hopefully, we'll have all that in hand and we can address it at our upcoming meeting on Thursday. And until then, I'll probably go out to Lincoln School Apartments. I'm going to recount the number of windows, just to make sure that we have an accurate count. But it's, in all seriousness, this, this is a long overdue project. And Amy is right, this is just one of several projects that we, we need to be addressing. So I really appreciate your, your emphasis there. And you're not letting go and making sure that, that we keep our eye on the ball. So thank you. Art, anything else?
Nothing to add. We'll be back with you soon and thank you.
Great. Okay. Okay. I am prepared to move on to our next agenda item. Which I do not believe we have any appointments to make the this evening. So the next agenda item would be our COVID nineteen update.
Thank you very much, Joe. So the COVID nineteen update for today, November second, is that statewide, the number of new COVID nineteen cases has been trending downwards since mid September. They have dropped from about nineteen hundred new cases on average per seven day period as of September thirteenth to about nine hundred and sixty new cases on average per seven day period as of October thirty first. So that's a good drop, but still a thousand new cases nearly. In Hingham, COVID nineteen cases continue to hover around thirty to forty new cases per fourteen day period for the last several weeks. That hasn't been changing much, up and down each each week as we as we go through it. The vaccination rate for Hingham remains at seventy three percent. However, if you look at only vaccine eligible individuals in Hingham, people aged twelve and over, the percent of fully vaccinated eligible residents is up to eighty seven percent. Our local policy local policy requiring masks indoors in municipal facilities remains in place, and I would note in an effort to be as current as humanly possible, my iPhone just dinged a little while ago stating that the CDC has approved the Pfizer vaccine for young children to be distributed as early as tomorrow. That just occurred about ten minutes ago, so that is a current COVID nineteen update.
Thank you. Anyone, Bill or Liz, you have questions on the COVID nineteen update?
I I didn't I don't have any question about the update, but I was going to make an appointment tonight, so if we could keep that on the agenda for next week, that'd be great.
Sure.
Thank you.
And no questions. Thank you, Tom. I do just want to make a comment that the COVID nineteen information on the town website has been updated. I spoke with Sue Sarny earlier this week, and she had was waiting for some information from the state, which we did not get in terms of the vaccination data that she wanted, but she did update the case count. So there is more current data on the the town website.
Great, thank you, Liz.
Any other comments from anyone else at the meeting on the COVID nineteen update? Seeing none, we turn to public comment on items not on the agenda. Are there any members of the public who have comments on items not on our agenda? Seeing none, we move to town administrator reports and select board reports. I'm actually going to flip it a little bit if I can start with a select board report from Liz Klein.
Hi. Joe, are you going to talk about HMLP?
I will, unless you you're welcome to do it as well. There's two two items that I wanted to make sure we address, which was our event today as well as the HMLP.
Okay, I'll start with the event, and you can do HMLP. So we, Joe and I and Tom got to attend the a very special birthday celebration at the shipyard today. I think we we read the certificate last at our last meeting, but it was a hundred to celebrate the hundredth birthday of Margaret Spaluzzi, and she is an important person in our in our region and in our country's history. She was part of the movement at the shipyard, women working to support the war effort, so that Rosie the Riveter movement she was she was part of with the, I got to read this, the steel toed toed boots and final pajamas under her her work clothes, working tirelessly to support the effort. So it was a really nice celebration, not only for her and her birthday and her family. She had four generations of her family there today. But we were also joined by Senator O'Connor, Rep Moschino, Rep Murphy, and her rep from Kingston as well. Just and I actually former selectman Paul Healy also did an excellent job talking about the history and the significance. He emceed the event, so it was really, really powerful to see that what the Historical Society had put together in terms of photos and just to hear all of the stories and the impact that this person in our community made in in the world, in World War Two specifically, so thank you to I know there was a committee that put that together with the the shipyard as what the launch, the shipyard and Andrew Young and several several staff members at Town Hall to pull it off.
Yes. And just to add on that, she was there. She was walking unassisted, hundred years old. Someone asked her to stand up. Paul asked her to stand up. She just stood. I mean, this was this was somebody who is full of life, you know, full of vitality. It was just, it was breathtaking and inspiring. And
Life well lived, for sure.
Yes.
And she has a lot more to to go, it seems like. Lots of energy.
So all assembled, we're just so so impressed. And thanks. Liz, any anything else? Did you want to say anything about I did?
I just wanted to to acknowledge HMLP and and thank them for their heroic Herculean efforts over the last week. I know there was a a letter that was created by the Light Board that will go to citizens and residents just acknowledging how big of a storm this was, how significant. Certainly, there's a lot of of damage around town. It's devastating to see to see the trees, a lot of personal damage. We know citizens were without power for several days, which is is very rare in Hingham. But HMLP did a phenomenal job getting getting power restored and answering all of the customer service calls of residents. So kudos to them. We're we're extremely grateful.
Absolutely. Bill, anything that you'd like to report?
Second, the great work HMLP did, our D P W and our Public Safety organizations last last weekend, last week's storm was something I've never seen before, and I've lived in this town my entire life, so great job by everybody. Appreciate everybody's hard work and focus on focus on the cleanup.
Yeah, it just to follow up on that, it was amazing, this bomb cyclone that is, I I've never seen huge trees that were it was like as if the wind went underground and that it pushed them up. It it was absolutely amazing. And the HMLP General Manager, Tom Morahan, on top of things, Chairman Ryan and Laura Burns, who are the on the board, were were overseeing, you know, vigilant, and both of them were just really deserve our deserve our thanks. The letter that went out to everyone, I actually got it as a HMLP customer really describes what happened, and the Herculean effort that went that went into making sure that we continued every effort to get power. And the the field folks were out there. And on Friday, HMLP had all of its equipment working, plus about ten bucket trucks from outside. Some of those were from private contractors, some for other towns with who had their own municipal electric departments, and so the we were very fortunate to be able to call on those folks and have them respond and assist us. We the we had the outside crews working from six AM to midnight every day. People were working nonstop. HMLP pulled out all the stops, and their employees really deserve our thanks, so I just want to build on what Liz and Bill had said. Tom, anything to add in your Tom and the town administrator report?
A Tom administrator, that works.
Your Tom administrator.
Yeah, thank you, Joe. I actually had a few items, if you don't mind. I will be just to, you know, not to beat a dead horse here with this storm response, but it was it was exceptional. There is there's, you know, obviously, there's the the visible response of the crews out during the day, you know, trying to do what they can. But there's there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes that needs to be acknowledged. All the the call takers at HMLP and the D P W, people that were manning the phone lines and receiving the the reports of outages. You know, I was personally in in meetings with Randy over at the D P W in the aftermath of the storm, as well as with Tom Morahan over at HMLP. I went in, I spoke with the with the both call takings teams at both facilities. Dedication runs deep, and it's clear in all of them. They care very deeply about what they're doing and about the people that they're serving, so you know, I I'm getting calls from Tom Morahan at ten thirty and eleven o'clock at night. Out there, he's personally inspecting people's homes, trying to assist with expediting the response. So again, the the dedication of all of these people is it seems to be bottomless in this town, which is really great. To that end, I would also like to mention one of our other employees who kind of went above and beyond. Certainly on Friday evening, we had one resident that had that had a power outage, wasn't able to get into her home and came by. We had opened up the senior center Friday afternoon until ostensibly until about five thirty PM, when our maintenance team member Horatio Hemmings, Ray Hemmings, shift ended. However, the woman's power wasn't able to be restored until much later. And so Ray, again, just stressing a common point that dedication among employees in this town is runs deep, and and they these folks really do care about the people in this town. He stayed. I finally got a call about eleven thirty Friday night that he stuck around for over six hours, sitting with with this resident at our senior center in the warming center with her with her pet that she couldn't that that needed to be in certain temperatures, so he entertained her, I'm sure. If you know Ray, I guarantee there was a lot of entertainment. Ray is a gregarious guy, and you know, I I just, I I don't know, I'm just so proud sometimes, not sometimes, often, as I think about the team that works with this town, so a shout out to to Ray, and you know, it's just, it reminds us that some of the folks that we don't see every day are are, you know, out there doing these wonderful things. So that's all good stuff. And the last thing I'll say is, we saw this tonight, I think, in in spades, you you got you got it, you got a sense of it. But our new Assistant Town Administrator of Operations has been with us now for about two months. If you haven't noticed, I kind of took him and dropped him right into the middle of the fire. He is working very closely with our staff and our law and our legal team. He's working diligently with residents on on boards and committees on on items that matter. This presentation tonight, you know, Art did a masterful job at a complicated issue on a complicated issue. He's working through it daily, working with Amy and her team on items that are, you know, in our, one of the things I want to make sure you understand is these are more than spreadsheets and presentations. These are people's lives that we affect when we do these projects, and and I hope all of you recognize it. I know the three of you do. I hope the public does as well, that the work that you see in these meetings is hours and hours and hours that go into the preparation for them, and it's all about helping the residents, so thank you all for the opportunity to stay to say all that. It's a very proud evening for me and a chance to 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 call out a a number of people, so thank you.
Great. Michelle?
Nothing to add tonight. Thank you.
That was a tough act to follow. And Arthur?
First, just thank you, Tom. You're you're too kind. I think it feels more like two years and two months.
Sure.
Let me let me just say, we'll we'll be back with you soon, and hopefully we'll be we'll have set conditions to 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 close the book on the process and get into execution on the windows project.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Bill or Liz, you have anything else to add? Second chance?
Yeah, if I could add one thing, and Tom mentioned it, Joe, you mentioned it too, but I was driving back from my son's youth football game in Marshfield on Friday night. It's coming through town about ten o'clock, and I saw three or four HMLP crews out, and I thought to myself, oh, Friday night, ten o'clock after the week they had. Yeah, I was really impressed by it, and you've mentioned it, but when I saw it, I just really, really kind of said to me, wow, these guys are really doing all they can, so.
I am prepared to accept the motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz Klein.
Aye.
Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
And Joe Fisher.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone.